This meeting will be called to order. We'd like to have approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Move and support it. Okay, there is approval of the minutes, which is in Tab A. And this is regarding February 27th Board Meeting. Okay, sorry. Roll call vote for the agenda.
Is this the new agenda?
Yes.
The gray agenda?
The new agenda.
For ten minutes?
Yes.
Chair of the Board?
Here.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Here.
Director Ramonkin?
Here.
Secretary Davis?
Here.
Trustee DeHardy?
Here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Wadeau?
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes from February 27th. And March 9th retreat.
So moved?
Support. Any, yes.
Both together?
Both together.
One vote? Okay.
Are, is there any discussion regarding the corrections or anything for the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we go down to citizen participation, verbal communications. No?
We have nothing, you might thank very much. We don't know if it's a question.
Oh.
Any public? We have one person, who's Caitlin Pedri. This is regarding the Narcan Education at WCC. I could not pronounce the correct name for it, so...
We have a microphone right there. Hello?
Hi.
Hello.
It's on? Yes. Okay. Hi, my name is Caitlin Pedri. I am a Human Services student here at Washtenaw Community College. I'm in my final semester. As you may know, a naloxone training was scheduled to be held on campus recently and then canceled. When I approached VP Hearns, who had let us know about the cancellation about this matter, VP Hearns told me that as an institution of higher education, we want to make sure that all of our students are learning every aspect of their professional endeavors. I am very proud that our faculty are always expanding and updating what they teach to develop passionate professionals to respond to the ever-changing world. But the college must evaluate every situation and the potential risks of offering training and information that could be executed in ways that put the college at risk. Because with knowledge comes responsibility. The response of family and community members to this crisis is an important part of fighting the problem, but currently the college does not feel comfortable teaching non-health professionals to administer medication without observation. First, I would like to say that that does not appear to be the primary issue with our training, as the college does educate non-health professionals on how to administer medication through hosting trainings like CPR, which instructs on the administration of epinephrine. And by hosting the naloxone training that we wanted to present free to students at the upcoming Harm Reduction Conference in the ML Building here on May 16th, I'd like to note that that is a $40 conference that is not necessarily accessible to students. I met with VP Hearns, Dean Greaves, Scott Hilden, Hillary Schroeder of the HSW Club, and Justin Teague from the Human Services Program about this cancellation today. This issue seems to be in the association with the club and students. I find the narrow distinction between what the college hosts from outside organizations and what the college sponsors to be through a club to be an insufficient reason to keep students from learning lifesaving techniques that are vital to their future careers. Questions as to whether or not this training falls within our scope of practice, or comparisons to nursing students' needs for background checks to enter their second-tier program are irrelevant in regards to this layman training which is available to the community. I am unsatisfied with the college's continued stance on this issue and the inability with the community to come up with specific concerns beyond we don't necessarily know what will happen if we offer this training to students. You attest to be leaders in this regard through your, your, pardon me, through your associations with others working in harm reduction in this community. And I expect that you would be prepared with the understanding of the risks of this training. As Dean Greaves has performed the training and gone through the training, as you are working with the community on these issues, I would expect you to come prepared with the understanding of the risks. The public health educator, Maya Doe Simkins, who was consulted with on this issue and is offering trainings at other colleges, said that this will be much more of an issue of liability for failing to provide safety information and materials. I find that this is a stance of fear and ignorance on the part of the college that smacks of stigma around a difficult subject. We have been pointed towards the Curriculum Advisory Council, where I hope that we will be examining the addition of naloxone training to the HSW curriculum. However, this is a multi-month process that does not do justice to the urgent nature of the situation. VP Hearns has challenged me to trust the administration, and that is something I do not view as having been earned, and that trust is not being extended to students to comport themselves as professionals in regard to a serious issue. I will not be satisfied until actions towards accountability are met on this issue. I would like the college to draw up a comprehensive plan involving students, faculty, and staff on modifications to the campus and the curriculum which should be made in order to best serve students affected by the opioid epidemic on campus and in the workforce. These should include free naloxone trainings on a regular basis made available to all students. In the meantime, scholarships for students to the Harm Reduction and Housing and Healthcare Conference on May 16th should be provided. Naloxone trainings should be mandatory for all Health and Human Services students. Naloxone should be available in known locations around campus for emergency use, not just with designated and specific individuals. WCC should be responsible for coordinating the provision of naloxone for those at risk on campus of witnessing or experiencing an overdose. This is in line with the World Health Organization recommendations. We must deepen our relationships with our community partners working in harm reduction, including proactive relationships with the recovery community in order to reach students who may be experiencing an opioid use disorder. And we must have an overall commitment to working as a partner to prevent opioid-related deaths and end the opioid epidemic on every level of this institution. What I am proposing is in line with the ethical standards for human services professionals and the ethical standards and values for social workers, which is the field I will be going into. I also think that this is in line with the Policy Regarding Curriculum Purpose and Effectiveness, 304-3, and I hope that you will continue to pursue this matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next person is Scott Boinkin. I failed to mention to our last person in speaking, you have three minutes.
No problem.
Thank you.
The last speaker invited me to come here as an advocate for advocates for naloxone training. Over the past year, I have personally been distributing naloxone to music venues in Detroit and around this area, including a few in Ann Arbor and in Ypsilanti. I've attended maybe ten town, public town hall meetings. I work as a recovery coach and an advocate for people in recovery, and have attended numerous naloxone trainings myself, which, if you attend the training, they give you free naloxone. The people in Macomb County where I attend the training understand that they're giving me naloxone to be given to other people. And numerous other community groups like Troy Community Coalition and Novi Community Coalition have donated Narcan to me for this cause. The demand for this stuff, once you put it out there, that you have it available for people who are concerned about friends or loved ones, is very, very high. The idea of pricing is a huge barrier to entry. Last May, Governor Snyder made, put down the standing order that naloxone would be available without a prescription in the state of Michigan. It took a long time for this to come around, and when I was gathering my own supplies, I talked to many pharmacists who weren't even aware of this. It's $150 for two doses. These are my own kits, but they look like this. It's a nasal spray, very easy for anybody to understand. $150 for two doses can buy 15 minutes to get paramedics to somebody. The training that's offered free through Macomb County, through the MACOSA program, through the jail, takes a half an hour, and they will give you $150 worth of Narcan for nothing. And there are always people in the class, and I know because I go every single time.
You have one minute?
I have donated Narcan to 20 different music venues within Detroit and Ferndale, Hamtramck, Ann Arbor, and Ypsilanti. I've been in the Metro Times on Channel 7 and Fox 2. So the public interest, when you say that you're getting this stuff out there, is huge. Novi Community Coalition donated 80 portions of Narcan to me to get out there because they get the stuff and they can't get rid of it fast enough because they don't know how to get the message out there. The second I went on social media and said that I had 80 doses of Narcan, I had 30 of them gone within a week. So, once people find out, the barrier of entry to price is gone. That's it. Right? And the training is easy, the product is safe, it's safe enough to give to a pregnant woman, and the list of stuff that you can't give to a pregnant woman is very, very long. It is an opioid-blocking antagonist. If there are no opiates in your system, there are no opiates to block. This is safe, it's a huge health concern that we see on the news every single day, and people don't know what to do about it. And the barrier to entry to price, the fact that pharmacies close at 9:00 PM, and the lack of education around it, the ideas that we would be enabling addicts by doing this, the misconceptions are really huge. People need this education. They need to know how this works. The only thing that naloxone training is enabling is you are enabling people to live another day and get into recovery. So, I would seriously consider, because I know people that have asked me many, many times, where in Washtenaw County can we get this training? So we need more sites. I'm familiar with Macomb County, I'm familiar with downtown Detroit, I'm familiar with what the DWMHA is doing. I am not familiar with this area necessarily, but the comments that come my way say that a lot of other people in the public aren't familiar with that either. So, that's what I got for you. So, please make a decision. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, written communications?
There was one received about the Narcan training.
Okay. We're going down to...
Excuse me?
Yes.
Vanessa, did that written communication get forwarded out to us?
I just got an email earlier.
Oh, today?
Today, just very recently.
Special reports, sabbatical reports, standardized patients. Dean Valerie Greaves.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I just want to introduce Teresa Dubiel, she's a mother-baby nursing faculty, and last semester she's been very busy working on her sabbatical, which is about standardized patients utilizing them in the simulation lab. And she did a project in collaboration with Tracy Jaffe. And so, I'm gonna let them share what they did, and we're gonna give you a little real-life simulation in the health arena tonight.
I'm Teresa Dubiel, I teach in nursing, and this is Tracy Jaffe, who runs the theater here. And I first of all want to thank you for being so generous and allowing us the sabbatical. I worked in collaboration with Tracy to develop what we call a healthcare theater. And so, two seemingly unrelated departments actually have so much in common, and so we're pretty excited about this. You've been very generous in our simulation lab. Healthcare programs across the nation are all facing the difficulty of appropriate clinical sites. It's becoming more and more difficult, and so what they have found is that doing simulation in lab with students and portraying certain scenarios and diagnosis really help with student success and actually with healthcare efficacy. And so what we found is actually with simulation, along with the mannequins that do everything on earth pretty much, we're missing one part, and that's the human factor. So we asked the theater department to provide training to show us how to train standardized patients that are given a certain diagnosis or scenario, they can be the support person or a healthcare provider, and what they offer is the emotional side of it, and we're going to show you a little.
We're gonna demonstrate, and what's really exciting about this is it's win-win. We have students on campus who are taking acting classes. Nobody's going to get hurt in this demonstration, I just want to be clear.
Why is it taking so long?
We have to do a full two minutes of CPR, and then we're gonna check for pulse in thirty seconds. We won't read a text. Okay, ready? All right, start compressions, and feel for pulse, and check for breaths on. I don't feel a pulse still. Do you have breaths on?
No.
All right, continue CPR.
Why is it not working? You said it would work this time.
Never know these kind of things. Very well done. We're doing as we can. So next thing, we're gonna grab some epi. There you go, sir. I'm gonna take over the compressions. All right, we're gonna do one person CPR now while I get the epi ready. This is, yeah, this is epinephrine, it's gonna go right into the thigh, and it's gonna make your heart beat and get going. Open air breathing, everything too, all right?
She'll be breathing.
Well, hopefully, you see a quicker reaction, hopefully. Yep? All right. There you go. There you go.
So, as you can see, this is, this works. This honestly works. Hospitals are using it across the country, they're training EMTs with it, the military is using it. But to have a whole theater department who will support us is just amazing. And so I want to thank you, I want to thank Val Greaves, who is absolutely so supportive, and our theater students, and our two nursing students as well. Thank you.
Well, I want to say thank you. This was really, took me by surprise. And I'm glad it wasn't a real baby at that point. But, this is really, the demonstration really shows what can be done, because, I mean, I've had kids like maybe a lot of people here, and when they're babies, and I've never ran across that type of situation, but it gives you a good idea of what you should be doing. Instead of, you know, I mean, yeah, you're gonna panic, but you still need to know what to do in the case, you, you know, while you're there, without the paramedics being there. But thank you so much, this was really very informative. Thank you both.
May I?
Yes.
The acting was really very... Really very good, so thank you.
Without a doubt. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dean Greaves. Okay, we're going to 2018 Art and Land Conference winners, Dean Kristen Good.
So, on a much lighter note... My heart is beating. We're gonna bring something calming and soothing, and that would be the winners for our art show that was on campus. I don't know if you had a chance to walk through the student art show, but it's truly magnificent, it takes over the Student Center's second floor during the month of March, and it includes our digital, our 3D, our 2D, our graphic design. It's so exciting to see the students' work. So tonight, we are sharing a couple of the winners, and you may have seen the artwork displayed outside ML 120. If you didn't have a minute before this meeting, it's gonna be out there afterwards. But I'm gonna ask Jill Jepson to come up. Jill is the, she's my coordinator of instructional support, and she did the whole art show with the whole host of help from people, but she really was the brain trust. She's gonna introduce the pieces that you can see after, and there's a connection to Tracy Jaffe, so you'll see a nice, you'll see a nice tie in the art here.
Good evening. This year, our WCC students participated in two fine art competitions, both the Land Conference in Muskegon, Michigan, and our annual student art show. The Land Conference was juried by an outside person, Grace Sarah, who is the curator of the Permanent Collection at Wayne State University. She, our students took two of the six awards that were presented during the Land Conference. One was Molly Keenan, who received the second place in three, in the 3D category for her work Spiral Eddie. And Molly is unfortunately unable to be here tonight. But Dorothy Mitchell is here tonight. Dorothy, can you please stand? Dorothy Mitchell received third place in the 3D category for Bamboo Bridge. And the Bamboo Bridge is currently on display as part of the Group Ceramic Show at, with WCC faculty and staff, students in the Taubman Health Center on U of M's medical campus. So unfortunately, this piece is currently on, it's moved on to another exhibit. And Dorothy is also the mother of Tracy, if you didn't already know. Our 2018 Student Art Show was held March 2nd to the 22nd this year on the second floor of the Student Center. And what I really like about it is it really brings the work of our creative and talented students right out into the forefront, where it opens doors where art is available for everybody. And as Dean Good mentioned, it included artwork from our fine art area, as well as graphic design and photography students. We had over 190 entries, and 160 were selected to be in the show. This year, we introduced three new awards, the President's Choice, the Dean's Choice, and the People's Choice Award. The President's Choice Award was selected by Dr. Rose Blanca, and that award went to Emily Cobb's drawing titled "The Color of Innocence." And Emily is unable to be here, but it's actually right up right now. The Dean's Choice Award was selected by Dean Good from the Arts and Sciences Division, and that award went to Joy Burton's Confine, which is right up there on the screen as well. I'm just working this very, it's working very well for me here. The People's Choice Award was selected by a community here at WCC. Everybody had a chance to vote, and this award went to Cheyenne Souza's "The Birds." With these choice awards, we're hoping to have them on display in their respective offices, as well as possibly having the People's Choice Award out in the Student Art Center. So we'll see how that goes with arranging that. So, within the Student Art Show, we always have first, second, and third-place awards, and this year, they were selected by an outside juror, Nick Tobier. And Nick Tobier is an associate professor and the Director of National Engagement at the Stamp School of Art and Design, and at the Center for Entrepreneurship in the College of Engineering at the University of Michigan. He selected the following awards, and I'll be happy to say that they are all here tonight. So, the third-place award went to Yasmin Alley's graphic illustration titled "Artist's Calendar." Yasmin is here. The second-place award went to Dorothy Mitchell for her ceramic piece titled Bamboo Bridge Number Two. And our first-place award went to Therese Jarzura for her painting titled "Bridging." And Therese is here. So I just want to mention that this exhibit was a team effort where staff, faculty, and our students came together to make this happen. I'd like to thank specifically Dr. Rose Blanca, Dr. Kimberly Hearns, and Dean Kristen Good for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, they're just beautiful. So we're going on to the recognition of Tom...
David.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to point out, for those of you that couldn't see the art show, it was phenomenal, and there were also pieces for sale. And I don't know if people realize this, but, you know, the art is an economic, it is a viable way to make some money. And I know that there were pieces sold out of this show, I don't know exactly how many. Jill, how many pieces were sold out of the show?
I don't know off the top of my head, because I have people contact the students directly through email. But I know that I bought a piece.
I bought a piece.
Yes, yes.
And we bought a piece.
Okay, so, just to let you know, next year, don't miss the show, and if you're moved by a piece, a number of the students actually make them available for sale.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, did Bill had something? Did you say goodbye, or did you?
I was just waving at them.
Oh, okay.
We're going on to recognition of Tom Pennard. Dr. Blanca?
Yes. Well, this gives me a great deal of pleasure to recognize Tom Pennard. Tom, could you just stand and then come forward? I have some things. As you know, Tom Pennard was also named the winner of our Michigan Community College Association Faculty Member of the Year Award last year. And this year, we nominated him as the, for the Dale P. Parnell Distinguished Faculty Award from the American Association of Community Colleges. This is a national award, which is very difficult to actually achieve. Tom joined us in 1992 and became a faculty member in 2000, full-time in 2000. He currently oversees the Advanced Manufacturing Advisory Committee to ensure that our training aligns with workforce needs. And all of you have had the opportunity to visit Tom's lab, and you know the amount of work and time that he has put in, along with his colleagues, to bring that curriculum up to the state of art, to the state of art. And they continue to do that. And so, thank you, and thank your colleagues for that. But there was one piece of work that Tom did that worked with his students on, and that was the work, the 3D work that he did with Lucy. And it's that work that we presented to the American Association of Community Colleges. And that is what he was recognized for. And in addition, it's because through that work, he demonstrated passion for students and the classroom. He showed a willingness to support his students inside... He showed a willingness to support his students inside and outside of the classroom, because if you recall, he worked with U of M in this project, with parents, the little girl's parents, and as well as his students. He is involved in college committees, and he goes above and beyond what's required to ensure that his students are successful. And so, Tom, on behalf of the board, of the president, and I'd like to say the board, but I'd like to have a photo with him. You could come even closer. We have this.
Close the bench.
We have an award that we'd like to give you. Of course, it's an apple, and it says, "In recognition of Tom Pennard, recipient of the Dale P. Parnell Distinguished Faculty Award, awarded by the American Association of Community Colleges, Washtenaw Community College, Michigan." And I'm sure you're going to get an award from them, but this is from us. Photo, would you like to say anything, by the way?
Just checking for pulse.
Brandon, you okay? Oh, all right. Brandon, you're going to come right here. Would the board like to say anything?
Congratulations, Tom.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we'd like to take your photo with the board trustees.
Just do you.
But you guys just come around to the other side.
Well, that's us. There's too many pictures.
This a good shot?
Yeah, all right. But you guys slide in the angle, so if time really be bad, then like, hold. Like, hold, and keep coming, yes, keep coming. Keep coming, keep up, and you guys come up right on the shoulder. Slide in.
Wait, give one more.
I'll put you over here so the monitors don't, you know. You're a big guy. Very good. Tell her over there. Angela, slide in just a little bit. Good. Perfect. Everybody smile. Just control it just a little bit. Very good. Angela, slide a little bit. You guys slide a little bit. Very good. Tom, pretty ready, one, two, three. Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We are doing one more photo, but. Let's stay over there. Yeah. Yes, I want to give that to you. Here it is. It was wrapped, and now I unwrapped it. But thank you so much for all the hard work you've done, and all the faculty staff that support you and your students and your wife. Yeah, somebody asked you, right? Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you again, Tom, and congratulations. So, wow, that was very nice. So, we are going down to, we are.
Hatzie Georgio.
We have to go to recognition.
Hatzie Georgio.
Hatzie Georgio. Okay, we're, uh, we're going to do a recognition of Emily Hatzie Georgio, President Blanca.
I'm going to ask Brandon, the dean, to recognize Emily.
Good, good evening. This is Emily. And she has been what we call a superstar student. She has matriculated through our auto-service program, and has actually taken some of our dual courses that we have, as we redeveloped that program with the equipment that we got from the CC Step Gray. Emily has successfully had an internship at GM, and actually had the opportunity to work in the same area as her father. Has followed in his footsteps, and as her father is near retirement, Emily may have the opportunity to actually take over from what he has been doing for the last 30-plus years. From that internship, she was named Intern of the Year through a national publication. We're grateful for that, but she also has been offered a full-time job, and will start at GM upon graduation. So we are, we are proud of Emily and her accomplishments, and the nation that was able to see just how great Emily is, so, thank you.
Congratulations, Emily. I had the honor of being on panel with Emily. Wonderful. So, congratulations, and if the board.
Okay.
And if the board.
Okay.
Would you like to?
Good work down the line. I'm glad.
Come right over here in front.
No.
That looks like that works. No, you're good. Perfect, yeah. All right, that's pretty good. One, two, one more. One, two. Excellent.
Thank you. Congratulations. Emily, would you like to say anything?
Um, yeah, just thank you to the college. Without your resources and opportunities, I would not have been successful, and I appreciate your best to the students. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Jill?
I wanted to say that I first met Emily at the North American International Auto Show. She was a volunteer for the Washtenaw Community College booth, labored under the vineyards for those long days, and I didn't even know she was an award winner. I liked her back then, too.
Oh, this is great. Okay, wow, now back to business. Monthly reports, personnel recommendations, Dean, Vice President Beltry.
Yes, I believe you have a.
That's Tab B.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying it's Tab B.
Yes, you'll find Tab B, although I think we provided you with a recent insert, the pastel document. As we approached Easter, we thought that was appropriate. And would ask the board to review and approve the personnel recommendations for the month of March. You'll see there's pretty light activity in terms of hiring.
Any questions?
Nope.
Yes, Ruth?
Is the web design, John Powell, is that a replacement for the front-end development engineer?
It says it is.
Is that, it says it's a replacement, but it's a different title.
Oh, I see.
Is that a new title or an old title?
This is, it is not a replacement for the front end. That's actually still.
Still open, okay.
Yep, this is a replacement of another position that's become vacant in the fall.
Okay. And I have one more question. Did we ever get, and maybe I missed it, the total numbers of custodian, maintenance, faculty, clerical, and administration? Did we get that?
The demographic information you requested.
Yeah, the total number of.
I thought, I thought we had provided that. If you haven't gotten that, we'll be sure to get it to you.
Did I? We got it. In the board memo, yes, okay. I knew that I said it. Thank you.
In this month's board memo?
Yes. Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is action. Yeah, I think so. Motion, need a motion.
I need a motion.
Some.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going down to financial reports, Vice President Johnson.
Thank you.
That's Tab C.
As a continuation of the theme from the board, the board retreat, the college continues to perform well with revenues about 1.1 million better than, than budget year-to-date, and then, and then expenses under budget of 2.1 million. So as of the, the end of February, about 3.7 million under budget, or better-than-budget for the period. The revenue side continues to be strong, both on the tuition side, with winter coming in right at budget, and fall having been strong. Property taxes are trending better than planned, largely because assessed values were stronger than what we had originally budgeted for that. And on the cost side, about 1.2 million is on the personnel side, and that's once again because our total full-time vacancies are, are higher than planned assumptions. We have always assumed between 20 and 25, and it's averaged closer to 30 to 35 per month. And the part-time staff side, not as much on faculty, but on the part-time staff side, we've, we've been trending under. And so, 3.7 million, and that, that aligns nicely with the forecast that, that we'd had for the year of about a 4.7 million surplus, and thus a basis for the mid-year adjustment that is an action item later in the board meeting.
Any questions?
Ruth? Explain, I'm, I'm sure I'm missing something, but in the second paragraph, you talk about credit hours being a little bit behind, but you're, you know, it's, it's, it's holding. And then on the next page, it looks like winter tuition is down 34,000. Is that correct?
That is right.
Okay.
In, in total, I mean, within, on 11.3 million.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're within 34,000.
Peanuts, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, David?
I've got a question. Question, is all of our winter revenue booked?
It is booked, although students, we still make periodic adjustments to stu, student enrollment for the semester, but in the main, it is all booked.
Okay. Is it possible some of that gets rebated back for students that dropped out?
No, at this point in time, we have passed beyond the 100% refund period. There are periodic times where, at the recommendation of Student Affairs, that we will make an adjustment for, for extreme circumstances, but generally, the 100% refund period has passed.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is that was something I was learning about at the, at the legislative summit in DC, was the change in the way they want us to rebate tuition for drop-off, students that drop off. Then, my other question is on the spring tuition. It looks like we're ahead. Is that already booked? Because spring classes haven't started yet.
Right, so this actually reflects the amount booked from last spring/summer. Since the spring/summer straddle is the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
We generally book around 60% of it in the current year, and the 40% in the subsequent year, just for recognition of the timing of when the classes are offered, that they straddle. So, we have not yet booked the spring/summer revenue for this current spring/summer that's about, about to commence in May.
Now, will that be in next year's fiscal budget?
It'll be in both. So we will recognize once again around 60% of the upcoming spring/summer revenue in this current fiscal year, and then the balance will then be rec, recognized in next fiscal year.
So this year-to-date actual recognizes 40% from last academic spring/summer?
Roughly, and that's an actual, that's a detailed calculation that we do class by class.
And, and does that include an actual that we've booked for the spring already this year, for people that have already signed up?
No, that, that, we actually, registration didn't open until March, so when, when you see the March financial results, you will actually see additional revenue being booked for the current upcoming spring and summer that will then be recorded. But this actual of 1, of 1,539 does not reflect any spring/summer revenue for spring/summer 18.
So, this is going to go up substantially?
It is, and so our, our budget for the year is 4.6 million, the total.
Oh, I see.
For the year.
Okay, now I'm understanding. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one, just bear with me. The last paragraph, and I'm at the bottom, is, it says, "As the savings from vacancies are realized throughout the year, the various divisions will show a positive variance to budget for the general administrative category." My question is, are the vacancies based on seasonal contract, or retirement, or what?
The, the vacancies that actually occur, of course, are mainly for part-time, but some full, full-time as well. So for full-time and part-time vacancies that actually occur during, during, during the year, most of those will not be seasonal in nature. Most of those will be for the whole year.
So really, it's just attrition through the.
That's right.
The year.
Yep.
Okay, no matter what it is.
That's right.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Okay, this is an action item. Do I have a motion? Oh, excuse me, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I move, we accept the financial report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we go down to remarks. Oh, I'm sorry, there's another one here. Back to you. Okay, facilities.
Thank you, that's in Tab, Tab.
Tab D.
Tab D. Just a couple, couple of highlights, some of our major projects that are going on in the BE building, the replacement of the fan terminal units. We're coming close to closure with Phase One, which is the second floor, and then we'll move to the first floor, and that's going on as, as scheduled. We have completed the design work for this work we're going to do this summer to further build out space for our nursing and health programs, for the SIM lab, and, and other lab space to support those programs. And that, and that work is targeted to be done by August 1st. At one time, moving on to parking lots at all, we had thought we were going to do Park Parking Lot 6 and the bus loop. We have decided to defer Parking Lot 6 until next year. It's in good enough shape, we don't need to do it. However, we, we do need to do the bus loop, and we're getting the final bids in on that, and we're, we're now the, the optimal time, timing to get that done, yep, this summer for the bus loop, for that. And then last but not least, the, the Capitol Outlay Project related to the Advanced Transportation Center new, new building pursuant to the state requirements, we will put in our, our documents with the updated designs and cost estimates and all that good stuff, and that'll be put in by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry. Like, remarks from the board trustees? Anyone have anything to discuss? Yes?
I was moved by the speakers today about naloxone or Narcan, and given the situation with the opioid crisis throughout the country, and the lack of significant action on the federal level, I think this falls to local communities, anti-individuals, to really do what we can. And what these speakers were speaking about was saving lives. This is important. If we can do it without liability, we should do whatever we can to get these life-saving treatments in the hands of people. And I know the community organization, the Democratic Socialists of America, is running trainings here in Washtenaw County and putting this, these treatments in people's hands. I know. And then on the next page, it looks like winter tuition is down 34,000. Is that correct?
That is right.
Okay.
In total, I mean, within, on 11.3 million.
Yeah, yeah.
We're within 34,000.
Peanuts. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, David?
I've got a question. Is all of our winter revenue booked?
It is booked, although students, we still make periodic adjustments to student enrollment for the semester, but in the main, it is all booked.
Okay. Is it possible some of that gets rebated back for students that dropped out?
No, at this point in time, we have passed beyond the 100% refund period. There are periodic times where at the recommendation of Student Affairs that we will make an adjustment for extreme circumstances, but generally, the 100% refund period has passed.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is that was something I was learning about at the legislative summit in DC was the change in the way they want us to rebate tuition for drop-off, students that drop off. Then my other question is on the spring tuition. It looks like we're ahead. Is that already booked? Because spring classes haven't started yet.
Right, so this actually reflects the amount booked from last spring/summer. Since the spring/summer straddle is the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
We generally book around 60% of it in the current year and the 40% in the subsequent year just for recognition of the timing of when the classes are offered that they straddle. So we have not yet booked the spring/summer revenue for this current spring/summer that's about to commence in May.
Now, will that be in next year's fiscal budget?
It'll be in both. So we will recognize once again around 60% of the upcoming spring/summer revenue in this current fiscal year and then the balance will then be recognized in the next fiscal year.
So this year-to-date actual recognizes 40% from last academic spring/summer?
Roughly. And that's an actual, that's a detailed calculation that we do class by class.
And does that include an actual that we've booked for the spring already this year? For people that have already signed up?
No, that, we actually, registration didn't open until March, so when you see the March financial results, you will actually see additional revenue being booked for the current upcoming spring and summer that will then be recorded. But this actual of 1,539 does not reflect any spring/summer revenue for spring/summer '18.
So this is going to go up substantially?
It is. And so our budget for the year is 4.6 million, the total.
Oh, I see.
For the year.
Okay. Now I'm understanding. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one. Just bear with me. The last paragraph, and I'm at the bottom, it says, "As the savings from vacancies are realized throughout the year, the various divisions will show a positive variance to budget in the general administrative category." My question is, are the vacancies based on seasonal contract or retirement or what?
The vacancies that actually occur, of course, are mainly for part-time, but some full-time as well. So for full-time and part-time vacancies that actually occur during the year, most of those will not be seasonal in nature. Most of those will be for the whole year.
So really it's just attrition through the year?
That's right.
Okay, no matter what it is?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, this is an action item. Do I have a motion? Excuse me. Did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I move we accept the financial report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
So we go down to remarks. Oh, I'm sorry, there's another one here. Back to you. Okay, facilities.
Thank you. That's in Tab D.
Tab D.
Just a couple of highlights, some of our major projects that are going on in the BE building, the replacement of the fan terminal units. We're coming close to closure with Phase 1, which is the second floor, and then we'll move to the first floor. And that's going on as scheduled. We have completed the design work for this work we're going to do this summer to further build out space for our nursing and health programs, for the SIM Lab and other lab space to support those programs. And that work is targeted to be done by August 1st. At one time, moving on to parking lots at all, we had thought we were going to do Parking Lot 6 and the bus loop. We have decided to defer Parking Lot 6 until next year. It's in good enough shape. We don't need to do it. However, we do need to do the bus loop and we're getting the final bids in on that and we're now the optimal timing to get that done yet this summer for the bus loop for that. And then last but not least, the Capitol Outlay Project related to the Advanced Transportation Center new building pursuant to the state requirements, we will put in our documents with the updated designs and cost estimates and all that good stuff and that'll be put in by the end of this week.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry. Like remarks from the Board of Trustees? Anyone have anything to discuss? Yes?
I was moved by the speakers today about naloxone or Narcan and given the situation with the opioid crisis throughout the country and the lack of significant action on the federal level, I think this falls to local communities and to individuals to really do what we can. And what these speakers were speaking about was saving lives. This is important. If we can do it without liability, we should do whatever we can to get these life-saving treatments in the hands of people. And I know the community organization, the Democratic Socialists of America, is running trainings here in Washtenaw County and putting these treatments in people's hands. I know we can do it here. All we have to do is resolve any liability issues. If I intend to work with somebody, and I'd like to work with somebody in the administration, and I'll bring forward a resolution to move this forward, but this is something we could do here. We've already seen Narcan save lives here on this campus and I think it's something that we not take for granted and not push off to the side, but something that we take the leadership role and make it available to the community.
Anyone?
I agree, Trustee DeVarty. If we can do it, we really need to look into it and do all we can to discuss it and, you know, the whole nine. Because I feel that the more lives that we can save, the better it is for everybody. Also too, I just got back in town from San Antonio for a Governance Leadership Institute training with the Association of Community College Trustees. It was very enlightening. I was really excited that the college allowed me to go. It was very intense, a lot of additional board trainings and case study workshop breakout sessions. So to help me and the board to be a better me and board, and I'm speaking for all of us, and ultimately for the college. So I look forward to continually going to other, you know, conferences and stuff so that we stay abreast and ahead of what's going on out here in the rest of the world. Because I can tell you, and I will say it again, I may be new, but so far, these other conferences I've been going to, we're doing really well in comparison to other colleges. And it's not just the board, us, it's the whole administrative staff, the faculty, the union, the students. I mean, we are above board on all aspects of what we're doing here and I'm so proud of WCC and it's really great to go out and represent us, you know. So, again, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
I was going to say something in line with what David was saying. Could we have, as part of thinking about the opioid crisis and what we can do, some report from counseling next month of what is being done or what their recommendations are or their thinking about this for next month, maybe?
Absolutely.
Just to see what's going on before we jump into a new thing.
Absolutely. May I respond? Sure. So, we are very supportive of this type of training and wholeheartedly agree with what Trustee DeVarty said and you're mentioning and also what Trustee Davis mentioned. What we're trying to tell the student is, we are very supportive. We just need to understand this a little better right now in terms of what, if there are, what are liabilities? And if we can, and we certainly would host training on this campus that anyone could do through our community education, we would certainly do that. We weren't, what happened is, we just weren't sure in terms of a student club coming forward saying they wanted to be trained to administer Narcan. That's where the question came up. Can we say to a student organization, oh yes, we can train you and you can be the administrators of Narcan? It's just a question. It's not a no. But it was, but we need to find out. In the meantime, you know, I've had the opportunity to have some conversations and to find out there are some avenues. As a matter of fact, Ellen and, I don't know, what's her name, how do you say, Rebicewitz?
Rebinoitz.
Rebinoitz. I've spoken with Ellen, who is the Director of our Department of Health, am I correct?
Correct, the County Health Department.
And she advised me, there are, she's actually going to get back with me, there are many opportunities and we do want our students to participate if they choose to, but not necessarily as part of a class activity or an academic club, more of, here's the training. If you'd like to take it, please do. So I understand, I had no idea that, I do understand about the May 16 event that the student was referring to, I didn't know it was a $40 fee, but we certainly will look at ways to provide this opportunity to anyone that would like to be trained, including our students. But the question was, should a student club be trained in an academic sense to administer Narcan? Not if we agree to it or not. So that was the question.
Okay.
Okay? Just so you, did I explain that well enough?
I can add here just a little bit, so you know, the college, we belong to the Washtenaw Health Initiative, so I'm very active with that. And one of the things, the projects that the group is doing is the opioid project. So I've been very active involved with training with Gina Delaw, all of our Ann Arbor Sheriff's Department, EMU's departments. So we have been reaching out in the community for that and definitely, it's a big crisis and we all are aware of it. Our National Student Nurse Association also has been working, bringing people into the community to speak about opioids. So we have some active things on campus. Maybe we're not getting the word out enough to share that, so maybe that's something we need to look at, more education and more teaching for students. So definitely something I can look to.
The key is putting the naloxone in the hands of people who will be, and the one speaker spoke to putting it in music venues throughout the Detroit area. And you're, we're finding or you see some of these overdoses happening in bathrooms in music venues, even in public libraries. And a staff person or an attendee at a place or even somebody who's in the library who has the Narcan available and can administer it very simply through a nasal spray can save a life. And as the person pointed out, I don't know him, saving a life, giving them an extra day, maybe they're in recovery and maybe it's, we've made somebody's life be able to go on and become a better life. And that's our, that's what we do here, primarily through education. But we are doing in many ways, making lives better and saving lives and putting this simple thing in the hands of people, I think is, it's more than the training. It's getting the life-saving medicine in people's hands.
I think we're all saying the same thing, Trustee DeVarty. We're all on the same page on that. It's just a matter, like you mentioned earlier, is the liability and that is very, you know, just for example, you know, something could happen, someone give it to them, then the college, the institution is liable. So we have to be very careful, as the President has just stated. Without a doubt, Dean Grease has been on this, the President has been on this way before these two speakers came. And I just want to say this too, is that we have to be careful when we start aligning ourselves with people who are talking about a cause. And I understand what you're saying, but we have to be careful because we are still trustees and we have to be able to, be able, let me put it this way, we have to be, we can't show that we are aligning ourselves with a cause unless outside of our role. We have to do it not as a trustee. You cannot do that because then you're liable, but also the whole board is liable and institution is liable. So that's all I just want to say. Be cautious of what can be said and how, because we're all passionate about this, but we're also trying to be very careful and cautious in talking with the right people and then we'd be able to do the right thing. Because like you said earlier and someone else said it earlier, when you start jumping out of the fire into the fire, from the frying pan into the fire, then guess who's going to get burned up? It's the person who started something and you're not able to continue with it. Yes?
As a community college, our community is facing a crisis.
I understand that. I just said that.
And I was simply asking that for next month.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
We have a report of what we're doing.
I understand.
And what perhaps we can do more of.
Yeah.
And a month is probably two, we'd like to do it tomorrow, but if we could have that as a touchstone for next month, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. And I'm just going to go back. Two administrators are working on it right now before this even came up. So it's just a matter of trust them. Let them, you know, put it into their hands. Because it, I mean, we all, believe me, I'm not immune from my family of drugs and I don't think anybody else is either. Our friends, our family, it's in our families, it's in our friends that we know, it's associates. We work with them. I'm understanding of this, but the whole point is, is that we have to be careful of how we conduct ourselves as trustees. We can, we can do whatever, but we have to leave it in the hands of the people who know the best and who knows how to reach out to these other entities. And the President has already reached out to the Health Department, Washtenaw County Health Department. They're more than willing to help us, more than willing to do what they can for us. And Dean Grease has done the same thing. So we have to let them do what they have to do and I'm quite sure they'll get back with us.
I'll give you a report next week, next month or sooner?
Next month.
If I have something sooner, I'll just send it to you and, you know, to be continued. How's that?
Yeah.
Because I know it's a pressing topic.
It is. It really is. I just want to say, last Thursday, Friday, the President and I attended the MCCA, Michigan Community College Trustees Executive Board Spring Meeting. It was, I mean, it was good, but it was kind of depressing because we're talking about declining numbers across the board throughout the country of students coming to community colleges. The numbers are declining fast and furious because high school students are not graduating from high school. High school students are finding other ways to do whatever they need to do and they're not coming to community colleges. And so we, you know, we've heard all kinds of presentations, there's a beautiful 45-minute presentation on veterans and how we, what's going on with the veterans across the country and how they're just now beginning to feel comfortable to come into community colleges. I am so grateful and I'm glad that Trustee Davis mentioned this about how we are heads and, almost heads and shoulders above other community colleges, especially here in the state of Michigan regarding veterans because we've been, we jumped on it right away. So we, you know, we have their own center. Other colleges still don't have that yet and so we're doing very well in that aspect of veteran centers. And I'm quite sure the President is going to discuss that or just mention it also. But it was, it's so much information, you just get overwhelmed in listening to what's going on around the country and our students and what community colleges are trying to do. Every community college is trying to do whatever they can and unfortunately, universities are not trying to collaborate with community colleges. I, you know, I just, I'm just baffled by that disparity between the two. So I'm going to let you go ahead. Oh, I do want to say one more thing. The, I just want to say this. SimCOG, just, as you know, I'm part of SimCOG. The SimCOG just, I was on a committee, I was asked to be on this committee again to select two people, elected officials, they had to be elected officials, who applied to go to the Harvard School of Government. And it's a three-week training in how to be, increase yourself as a leader and a government official or a person who is in, been elected. So I was on that committee and we selected two very fine people that were going, that is going to Harvard this summer for three weeks. And that is an honor to do that. So I'm just putting it out here for my board or any other elected official that may be in the audience, that if you're interested, let me know and I can pass on the information so for next year or whenever you would like, if you're interested, I can help do that. And another thing, and then I'll be done, I mentioned about last year being on a committee for the Regional Clearinghouse Committee and that's for transportation. And what this, it's beyond just transportation. But this committee, when I got on there, I had asked Damon Flowers if he would submit a proposal, because he and I had been talking throughout the couple of years about building a, not a trail, but a pathway for people to get to the community college. And so we did get that funding. They're going to be starting, I guess, this spring, is that correct, Bill? And, but any case, besides that, I was also on that committee at the same time, I helped, well, I don't want to say helped, but that was instrumental, I'll put it this way, in securing funding for the Manti Gardens Motorized Border-to-Border Trail. And they got the funding and last Thursday, I wasn't able to be at the meeting because I was at our other meeting. And they received an award, outstanding award, I believe that. Could you speak a little bit more about that, Vice President Mueller?
Yeah, and basically, SimCOG identifies a project each year that they consider a significant project that they run in the board for, community-based project, and that project was with Botanico or the Botany Gardens. And so Washtenaw Community College actually was recognized as playing a significant role with the University of Michigan in helping that to happen, so.
Yeah. The border-to-border, it starts from Ypsilanti Township, from Ypsilanti Township to the Gardens and from the Gardens to Washtenaw Community College to University of Michigan. And this is a bike trail and they did footpath or over the bridge, they rebuilt the bridge and some other things. So we are so fortunate to be part of this award and I feel really thankful that I was there at the right time to help get this going. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, I have about 20 things I want to bring up here. No. Anyway, no, thank you so much for being part of that SimCOG board though, because that is very time-consuming and it's good to have a representative on.
It really is, yeah.
Yes, excuse me.
Can I ask a question about the path? Now, we're going to have a retirement community right by Parker Mill.
I didn't know anything about that.
Well, they've been clearing the land for it.
Uh-huh.
And it's about 40 acres and there's a company that's building a 600-unit retirement community on the corner of, what is that, Gettys and Dixburg.
Oh, wow.
So there you are.
Oh, wow. That's, that's right on time for them too.
That's right on time for me.
Yeah, right. Thank you, Ruth.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
This evening, I would like to introduce, the board's already had an opportunity to meet our new Vice President of Facilities Development and Operations, Mark Allen, but Mark, would you stand? Mark, well, beginning on April 2nd, he retired as a Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force and spent more than 20 years in facilities, in facility positions, both domestically and worldwide. He holds experience working in higher education and served as a Senior Director of Facilities at Wayne State University, Facilities and Operations at Wayne State University. He most currently worked with the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority. His expertise and experience will play a key role as our college continues to grow and change and meet the needs of our students and our community and staff members. So could we please all welcome Mark?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mark. I'd just like to remind the board about tomorrow, it's probably on your calendar already, the Economic Club.
Oh, yes.
Thursday.
Thursday. Oh, it's Thursday, that's right. Our Washtenaw Economic Club. Again, this is one everyone looks forward to, we'll have is one everyone looks forward to when we have the economic forecast. Another event that is coming up that is really exciting is our Smart Cities Symposium. You might have seen it. If you were on LinkedIn, you probably saw the LinkedIn alert that was on there. It's something we've advertised. How did, Michelle, do you want to say a few words about it, or Brendan?
You know, I'll say that it's something that we've been promoting. We have a great lineup of speakers. Kirk Steidel from M-Dot is speaking. Ken Washington, who is the Chief Technology Officer for a Ford Motor Company, will be providing the keynote presentation. We have, thank you, Camilo Serna, Vice President Corporate Strategy from DTE Energy. So we really have a great lineup of speakers and we're really looking forward to presenting a really exciting presentation to the attendees.
And was this, how was this marketed, communicated? It was nationwide, right?
Yeah, so we put out press releases, display ads on Google, through LinkedIn as well. We did direct mail in Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana. So did a lot to get the word out.
Very good. Thank you.
When is it?
It's April 6th.
And is it sponsored by the college?
It is sponsored by the college, yeah.
And other organizations?
It's not sponsored by other organizations. There is a small fee to, you know, we're, so there is an attendance fee, you know, small fee to attend, you know, mainly pays for some expenses.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. Do you know if it's, you know, you said it's April when?
April 6th.
April 6th. Oh, that's next week. Do you know if it's filled up or still?
Well, we're, you know, we're looking, I would say that attendance really is gaining momentum. So we're, you know, we're looking at about 200 people attending. So that's what we're hoping for.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
I wish we could turn the video camera off. But don't forget, this is part of our strategy. You know, it's because we are leaders in this area of cybersecurity, of mobility, advanced transportation. And actually, it wasn't very difficult for us to get these prestigious speakers here, because they have so much respect for the work we've already been doing. So it's, it's very good for the college for us to be doing this as well.
Will that be here in Morris Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you.
And last, but definitely not least, oh, don't forget about Free College Day, April 7th. Just take your month, April. April's community college month. So if you don't have anything to do, call me. I'm sure there's something I can send you to, or there's something you can do. But that Saturday, April 7th, Free College Day, is a very important day. We have a lot of faculty and staff are participating. We have classes on cybersecurity, small business, photography, STEM topics, improv theater, adult CPR, genealogy, self-driving cars, biology, personal finance, and who knows? Maybe we can even have a training on, what is it called?
Narcan.
Narcan.
Yeah, that maybe that we could. Who knows? Anyway, so, and last but not least, happy birthday to you, Diana McKnight's birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. All right. So we're going to go on to Tab E, Old Business 2018-19 Tuition and Fee Rate for Credit Classes, and that is Vice President Johnson.
Great, thank you. This is, this motion is being brought in support of our robust discussion we had at the retreat. At the retreat, we reviewed our rates versus the rest of the 28 community colleges. We also looked at the enrollment trends of the college and the role that our tuition plays within our total financial forecast for the college. And the recommendation that we bring the board, the seat, is that we were able to make a recommendation that we hold our in-district rates, both for on-campus and online, flat from the current year, and that for out-district, for out-state and international, that we have a 2%, 3%, and 4% rate increase respectively. In addition to that, on the fee side, we're also making the recommendation that for the first time in 14 years, that we increase our technology fee, which currently is $7 per credit hour. And we're recommending that that increase to $10 per credit hour for the upcoming year. The basis for that is, is the significant and ongoing investment that the college has made in technology for our students directly as it relates to within the classroom, as well as all the support services that go to help support students both during the enrollment process and for all the facets of student success. And it's, it's really an important part of the, of the total revenue picture that we be able to have the rate increase on the technology fee from $7 to $10.
Any questions? Yes.
Not a question, but I would like to thank the administration for bringing forward a, a budget that doesn't raise our in-district tuition. And I think that's really something that we should strive to do whenever we're able to, recognizing that community colleges are the route to higher education, post-secondary education for people of limited economic means and could be a path to four-year institutions and to good-paying jobs and a successful life in their, whatever communities people gravitate toward. So this is really important. I recognize the tuition-fee increase, which is across the board. It's not just, it's for, on in-district students as well as out-of-district students, is long past due. It's a modest increase, and I accept that. But anytime I'm striving to keep the community colleges affordable as possible to the people of least economic means, anytime I see a fee increase or tuition increase, I would look to, and I would hope, as we continue our discussions of the budget, any way that we can put part of that into increased financial aid for people of economic, with economic need. So somebody like me taking a class, the $3 fee increase doesn't hurt that much. But somebody who may not be able to afford to the college, if we can just boost a little bit of that money into financial aid to make the college, make this post-secondary education accessible financially for people with the economic need. And I know you're working on the budget, and we have more briefing to go with that. But it's something that I strongly encourage to look for, to look towards. And I, but I really compliment you on what you've done with holding the line here. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes, Ruth.
I wasn't able to attend the retreat, and Rose graciously offered that Bill could present to me the argument. But my response was that the documentation that was in our packet for the retreat was very well done and very clear. And I actually have no questions. And thank you for making it easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. And David, anyone else? Okay, this is an action item. Can I get a motion?
I move we accept the recommendation for tuition and fee changes as laid out by the administration. Support?
All in favor?
Aye. Do we need a?
Oh, roll call, excuse me.
Chair Ben Nigworn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Senator Lusker?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Gantner?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Tab F, Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Adjustment. Vice President Johnson.
Thank you. At the retreat, we had gone through in detail a forecast for the current year that, that would say that we would have a surplus of $4.7 million. And that $4.7 million was really three, three pieces. About $1.8 million was, revenue was higher than, than budget due to both tuition and fee revenue being, being higher because enrollment, credit hours-wise, was higher, especially for fall. Secondly, property taxes are forecasted to be higher than budget, as we had mentioned before, due to SaaS values being higher. And also that our investment income is going to be higher as well. We've gotten more refined in our models and been able to get down to the weak in terms of the cadence of being able to take excess cash and reinvest that cash. So that's, that's, that's really helped. So about $1.8 million on, on the revenue side. The balance really comes from the expense side. And much, much like we had spoken this evening in the February financial report, is that personnel costs are forecasted to be lower by about $2 million or so, largely vacancies, full-time and part-time, and some forecast of direct expenditure savings based upon current trends. When we looked at the needs, needs of the college, as the prior VP of Facilities had laid out for the board, there is a very significant need for deferred maintenance, campus repair maintenance. And that certainly has been reaffirmed during our current budget process for fiscal 19. And it's our recommendation to the board that we do a mid-year budget adjustment that would take $4 million of the forecasted surplus and to reallocate that to deferred maintenance for an extra $3 million and then an extra $1 million related to campus repair maintenance. Also, as part of this, we are asking to establish for the first time, but an ongoing new item, a new capital fund for furniture. It's an area that we really haven't, as a college, gone through a comprehensive review, assessment, and planning for furniture replacement needs. And so through this mid, mid-year adjustment, we're also asking to reallocate $250,000 for the establishment of that fund. We would recommend in the current year that if the board were to approve this mid-year adjustment, that we would work to replace and enhance the furniture for our students in all the classroom buildings in the main lobby areas. If you walk through the buildings during peak times, you'll find many times that students are sitting on the floor. We just don't have enough seating. And that certainly was affirmed during the space utilization plan as well. And so it's, it's our recommendation that we, that we take the forecasted, the lion's share of the forecasted surplus and to invest in capital and in our furniture fund.
Any questions?
Just real quick.
Yes.
So the 250, you think is going to be enough to cover all that needs to be done?
We have gone through a detailed assessment. We went through in detail with VP Herms and VP Blakey. We walked the campus. And then we have gone out and, and actually gone out for quotes on it. And we feel very confident with that. As a starting place, as you'll see when, when we present next year's budget, we, we want to continue on and continue on through a multi-year plan for the classrooms. And so you will see that we are going to be earmarking money in next year's proposed budget to continue through with replacement in the classrooms.
So the manufacturer, the vendor, rather, you already have an idea? And I ask because, you know, you could find office furniture vendors that can give you a good quote, but the product, you know, is not satisfactory in terms of its longevity. And there's others that are, that have a lot more quality to their product, that may offer, you know, discount bulk price. I mean, I don't know. So this is why I was asking, you know, have you, which I believe that you, who you are, have already done your due diligence and researching, who could offer the, you know, the best product for, for our budget. And so am I correct in saying that?
We have, Facilities Team has been working over the last year or so to find a vendor that is, that has been approved by the State Consortium on Purchasing. And I believe the name of the vendor is KCI. And they, and they are, have been a strong vendor, and they, they warranty the furniture for life. Now, that doesn't mean that we'll want to keep it for life.
That's right.
But they, they warrant, they, they, they do warranty for life. And so that, that is the vendor that we'll be going through for, for this, this first tranche of furniture replacement.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? You don't have anything to say, David?
It was all well explained. I actually was going to point out, as VP Johnson just did, that this is a new line item that will, we will continue to see next year in next year's budget. That it's not just a one-time thing, but it's an ongoing look at our furnishings that we provide.
Well, it's, it's time.
Yes.
And, and I agree with you, because when I went through, a couple of weeks ago, I went through down, over there, Student Center, students were everywhere. So I do understand what you're saying. Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And so again, I need a motion, action item?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, do that again. Okay, roll call.
Chair Ben Nigworn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Senator Lusker?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Gantner?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
All right. We're going down to new business. And this is a discussion only. Allowable 2018-19 Act Valoreum Tax Rate. Vice President Johnson.
Great, thank you. Just to, yep, just to remind the board, the board actually will have two separate actions that, that we will request related to the property tax rates for the upcoming year. The first one by statute is, is a motion for the board to give the college administration direction as to whether or not we ought to assume, when preparing the fiscal 19 budget, that we should use the maximum allowable rate for property taxes. That's by statute, the board needs to get, to give us that, that direction. That's what this draft motion is, is for. Just, so you know, we, we have assumed, for sake of our argument, preparing our budget, that, that is the direction that you will give us. But it's, it's your, it's your direction that we, we will take. At the next meeting, we will then have a new item for discussion on property taxes, which is actually the rate that we would ask for you to approve. And that rate of approval, then, we, we would bring to the board at the May meeting for approval.
Any questions? Yes.
So this rate, is it the rate that we currently have?
It is.
And I note that there's $54,400,000 forecast. Are you expecting that to be rolled back by the state headly amendment?
This is actually the current headly adjusted rate. And the fifth, the $54 million is the gross tax revenue, so that, that is further reduced by DDA and, and by refunds.
Okay. Do you have a projection? I guess we'll see it when we see the budget, how it compares to last year's.
All right. Now, this, the current rate, you said that, well, how will it increase?
It, it actually, most, most likely, it will further decrease from, from, from this rate. And we're not going to know that actually till after we present the first rate to the board. It won't be probably till the May meeting that we'll have the final rate as approved by the county, which will have the head, the then-current head, the adjustment applied to it. So we'll kind of present a draft rate to you at, at the next meeting.
In April.
In April.
But in May, but it may be different.
That's right. It might be. It's just the timing of when the county finally approves the font, the, the final rate. So we'll give you a draft next month with the best information we have at that time.
All right, all right. Yes.
Would there be any advantage to us approving this tonight if we wanted to by unanimous?
I wouldn't watch it.
Not until we see it.
Not until we see it.
No, it's, it's, this is a 3.4.
Right, but the rate is what we.
But you want, you're going to say we should approve it in April, right?
April, right.
And then the county is going to come back and say, after we apply the headly restrictions, it's going to roll it back.
Right. Right.
Which they do every.
Right.
Like, we need to approve it at some point.
So, once again, this is not approving the rate. This is you approving to give the administration the knowledge of what rate should we use the maximum, whatever that rate is going to be when preparing our budget for next year.
Right.
There are probably some taxing authorities in places in the country like Kansas that would, when Bill comes forward with something like this, would give him a lower amount. But we don't want to do that because we recognize the value that the community college brings to the community. So we want to give the administration, I'm thinking, why wait? Let's do it now.
He didn't ask us to.
No, I'd rather wait.
I'd rather wait.
Whatever people want us to.
Yeah.
I think, oh, you just need this for budgeting purposes for next year, so there's no emergency, no urgency to this issue. Yeah, I don't see any reason.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we go down to, oh, we're down, oh, I'm sorry. Retention and recruitment, software contract. Vice President Blakey and Vice President Hearns. Valid by Johnson.
All right. Good evening. This is a continuation of the really robust conversation that we had about student success at the retreat with the presentation by VP Hearns, Dean Jennings, and myself. And, you know, as we talked about, you know, the, all the ways that we're trying to reach out to students for recruitment and for retention, and we talked about some of the challenges with that. And, you know, we have to meet students where they are and students expect us to meet them where they are. So we're making contact, you know, making contact through letters, emails, phone calls, texting. And as noted on your document, you can see for, on the first page, for prospective students, we're sending out over 475 communications to the prospective students annually. And so you can see what the large number is. And some of these communications must be just in time. So when we, you know, a student wants to get a text reminder of, you know, you have your advising appointment tomorrow, or you have your student connection session that you signed up for. So the timing and the communicating this is essential for the student. And no current system that we have keeps track of who is getting what when. We certainly have a schedule of, you know, here's the message, here's the group of students that's going to get it, and the date that they're going to get it. But that's not, that's not kept track of on an individual student basis. So when a student calls our call center and they say, you know, I got a message email yesterday and I think it was about financial aid, but I deleted the email, we have to kind of struggle to figure out what exactly is that message that that student got. And having a system that's proposed where we would actually be able to bring up the student, we would see every text message they got, every email they got, every letter they got, we could have a much richer and more meaningful conversation to say, oh, yes, you got a message about this. And this is how I can help you find that. The same thing happens when they, when they see an advisor. They may come in and say, you know, I got a message about, you know, my financial aid, but I'm not sure exactly what it meant. The advisor could look in the system and see exactly the message that the student got. So it's really important to, again, have that more meaningful conversation with the student when we're doing advising or answering phone calls. And I'll turn it over to Kim to talk about the retention model.
And I think one of the things that we talked about at the board retreat is that the more we dug into ideas and strategies around retention, the more we realize we don't have enough information about our students or access to act on that information. So one of the examples that we talked about is, a lot of times, we spend a lot of energy making sure students are registered for the next semester so we can increase their persistence. But what happens is, once we get the students in the seats, we're just kind of sitting around waiting for them to maybe not be successful. And so having a more holistic system that allows the advisors and the faculty to work together and see our student as one student will allow us to be able to target more communications to them, know if there are some needs that are going unmet, and really give us more signals about how we can help our students be successful instead of us waiting to the end of the semester when they may not be successful. So some of the things that this system will allow us to do is referrals. So if an instructor felt that a student needed a referral to tutoring because they may be not doing very well in math, the system will allow them to push that referral to the tutoring center and also there'd be a feedback loop so we know that was followed up on, and any other assistance that we might be able to give to the students. Right now, those are kind of on the honor system. There's not a warm handoff from one person to another, and there's no follow-up between faculty and advisors or the student tutoring center. And so again, when we look at our transfer rates, we want to help more students successfully transfer to different institutions like Eastern or Western. And one of the things that we started collecting on applications this year that we mentioned at the retreat is what school students are interested in transferring to. Right now, we want to be able to do more targeted communication around which schools are going to be visiting us to do recruitment fairs or what information they need about different articulation agreements. And we're not readily able to do those things right now. And so our thinking is that this system will not only help us recruit more students, but really help us have more of a one-to-one relationship with our students from a student success standpoint and for advising and faculty to see the student as one student and be able to work together to help those students be successful.
So we formed last fall, we formed a committee, good cross-section of the college and number of faculty, advisors, and other administrators, various, to really explore all the various facets of the technologies that are out there that can help with the things that Linda and Kim just spoke of. And from that, we wrote an RFP, we issued that RFP, and then we vetted the bids that came in from that RFP, including bringing in a number of the vendors for demonstrations. And it was very deep detail, very long, long days of vetting that. That included the RFP committee spending about two to three hours itself. And then we offered some open demos for campus to come in and to really just kind of see the products and give us their input on it. And so we use that process as a way to kind of vet and to consider the college's needs in what product might be the best fit for us. The committee landed to make a recommendation for what you have here before for you is that the college entered into a contract with Target X. Target X is a company formed a number of years ago that's built upon the Salesforce platform. And for those who might know, Salesforce is one of the largest organizations in the world that supports customer relationship management systems. And they've been doing it in a number of industries, but not in higher education specifically. But Target X then partnered with Salesforce to be able to then build something that was specific and unique to both student recruitment and now retention. They've had their recruitment piece now for about seven, eight years, and now they've just started to come out with their retention piece. And we are very, very excited about it, that we think for the reasons that have been put forth, that by this fall, that we'll be able to have this new tool up and running and in the hands of faculty, of advisors, of counselors, of admissions folks across the spectrum, and it'll create that unified view of all touches that we've had, what interventions that we've tried to do. And then it'll give us some very rich information to help best meet the students where the students' needs are. And so the recommendation that we're making is that we enter into a three-year contract with Target X at a cost not to exceed 320,000, and we've outlined what that is. There are some other ancillary costs. So as I mentioned, that Target X sits on top of the Salesforce platform, so we will have to separately contract with Salesforce for their licenses as well as a data integration piece. Because one of the rich things about this is being able to pull data both from our learning management platform, Blackboard, our online platform, and from Banner, our ERP platform, and all, and all the data that we have about the student in those two venues and to be able to integrate that within our Target X platform so you have that unified view. Those costs for the Salesforce and Axiom is the data integration piece, that we think that those cost increases are going to be fully offset by being able to eliminate other duplicate costs that we currently have. We have a much weaker CRM platform today that has hit the end of its life. And so we will get rid of that platform and a couple of other pieces of software that we have so that, but for the Target X costs, that it'll be a wash. And that's our recommendation.
Any questions? Yes, Bill?
What will the requirements be for our personnel to adapt to this platform? And will it be universal on the part of all of our staff then?
There's.
There's some training that's going to be.
Absolutely. There is, there is training. It's a very intuitive tool. It's a tool that I have dashboards that will allow you to see activities going on across the college as well as specific to a student. And also, it'll be a tool that will then allow us to enable campaigns of communication, to enable workflow. Hey, we've noticed that this student hasn't answered this text or this email around this campaign that you haven't yet registered for fall. And we're trying to reach out to you. Can we ask for help from this group of faculty, staff, to go and reach out to that particular set of students? So there will be specific training, given the various roles that we have, but that's one of the things that we liked about Target X. It was very intuitive and was able, were able to do targeted training to help enable folks to best use the tool.
A screen that a class owner might see.
Be different than a screen that a advisor would see. So the roles, depending on the role that the employee has, would vary what they see.
Good.
Yes, I have a question. So we have, would this just be set up for new students coming in, being newly enrolled? Or will this be able to capture the current students that have already been here, you know, before this system takes?
Both. That actually was a criteria of the committee, that we needed to find a tool or tools. And we frankly looked hard at two different tools, one for new students, one for current students. But Target X really meets the needs of both.
Okay, so there's a, will there be a lot of, I won't say manpower, but I'm sure this has the capability to draw the certain informations like registration, like who, what classes are taken, who that person is. And I'm sure this has the ability to capture all of those without having to sit there and plug each name in. Because that's what, really, that's what was going through my mind when you were talking about. I was like, I know they're not going to plug in A, B, C, D. You know, there's got to be some, there's got to be some way in which this can electronically pull all that information together. And that's why I was wondering, in what you just answered, that it has the capability of capturing all the students involved, whether they've been here or they're about to come in. So that's good. That's great. This is awesome. I like this. And are we the first one getting this? Are there other community colleges doing this?
In the, in the state of Michigan, there's one or two other community colleges.
The Scalabrine Valley.
And Western.
And Western.
Western, okay. All right. Well, that's good. Anything else? Yes.
Two questions. One is, so for three years, we're going to do this, and how will we evaluate whether it was worth it?
So two key things. One is the yield rate of students that apply to enroll. So we have very specific goals around increasing the enrolled student yield rate for new students. There are many pieces of that, but this tool is really going to be one of the great facilitators. And then secondly, around retention rates.
So all the things we talked about at the retreat, we have different segments of students that we've kind of broken down to figure out, you know, are we going to see, what's the increase in retention for this group of students?
The 10 cohorts.
The 10 cohorts that we talked about. And so we may be adding more cohorts. I mean, hopefully, we'll be able to see more data so we have a better understanding of all the cohorts we should have or all the different ways we should be looking at our students so we're better providing them services. But ultimately, we're going to see an increase in retention. That's going to be something that we're going to be looking at. And where we're seeing it and maybe where we're not seeing it and where we can increase it a little bit more.
That's very important. In the document for the retreat, there was no mention of faculty input into this new system. And you mentioned faculty advisors. Were there teaching faculty on your committee as well?
Yes. Two teaching faculty and two advisors on the committee.
Yes, David.
Two things. The training to get this implemented that trustee Milliken asked about, is that in the implementation line item in year one?
It is.
And so that covers the training as well as just the installation of that. Okay. It says a three-year contract with annual renewal options. Are those annual renewal options after the three years or during the three years?
After the three years.
So are we approving with this vote an automatic renewal, if you choose to renew?
Yes.
After the three years, so.
And so we wouldn't see, I'm going to want a report back to see how the success is before.
Well.
Well, anyway.
Fourth year.
Yeah, the fourth year.
We should have a report before that. I mean, you're not going to wait to three years or so. Right.
I trust the administration, but I, it's like a blank check to keep going.
But because of the amount of money, we'd still have to approve it because it's over 100,000.
We have approved it with this contract or with this vote?
We haven't approved anything.
Well, if we do, if we do it with the annual renewal options, I mean, we could take that out and then have them come back to us to renew it in three years.
In three years. We know.
In three years.
I think, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
I would never expect this board to blindly approve anything.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking at that.
I wouldn't even give that to you.
Is it a true option or are we committing to indefinitely being with Target X?
We are not. So it's a three-year contract, and the advantage that we got with three years is a fixed price for the three years. We've asked Target X to write in annual renewal options as part of the contract.
But the option has to be exercised and the exercise would have to be approved by the board?
That's, we typically have not done that. So for instance, as a good example, is our ERP system, Banner. The board had approved the Banner system for an initial 10-year period. You know, with annual renewal options, we have not come back to the board to ask for the right to those annual renewal options since they were part of the original contract. So that's, this one is structured in the same way.
So we could, by approving this, are the annual, the way the contract is written, is the annual renewal option, is that a continuation of the same fixed price?
It would not be. It then would be based upon the price that we negotiate at that time for the succeeding years.
We'll come back. I mean, I don't have any problem with coming back.
Okay. Maybe we take that annual renewal option out of there and you just come back.
This is a discussion item, correct?
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
Right. I know we have, but that's why I'm raising it, is it's something I want to think about and that we should all think. Then, and other questions, in the information, I didn't really look at it real closely till you were presenting it. So on the new student relationship building, are those potential students? So those aren't students that have signed up yet?
Those are prospective students.
Perspective students. And so when we're over 475,000 communications, I just divided it by 25,000 as an estimate of our annual enrollment. But that's not accurate because really, we reach out to way more than that.
Correct.
Far more. And do you know how many prospective students, different individuals, we reach out to in a year? I'm just trying to get a sense of how many communications per.
So if you think about, we have 7500 new, these are just new students. Think about new students. So 7500 new, but there's a lot more students that actually apply.
Right.
Who then don't finish the process or decide not to register with us. And then even, we have students that we've been reaching out to that don't even have the application. So the funnel is really huge. So you have people that are just maybe interested that we reach out to.
So when I'm looking at this number, 475,000 communications, does that also come? count when one of our staff people goes into a high school-
Yes.
-and does a recruiting visit, and how many people they present to?
Well, this would be the communications, no, this would be more the communications where we're reaching out to them. So maybe they were, did that high school visit, and then we got a contact card, and then we reached out to them after that. So we sent them a letter or an email, encouraging them to do the next step of the process.
Do you have a sense on how many contacts per person we're seeing, as opposed to the gross number here?
I could get that number.
Does it change, does it change depending on what vehicle they come to us, or we find them?
Yes. And it will also vary depending on how quickly they're going through the process. If someone gets in the process, fills out an application, comes in and registers, they're not gonna get all the in-between of, oh, you did this step, now you need to do this step. So depending on how quickly someone does something-
And then once they're registered, once they're registered and they're a student, then they come into this 850,000 communications per year-
Correct.
-group.
Correct.
Do we have a sense, now that's, that's another area where I'm looking for. How many communications per person are we doing?
Well, Dave, I'm trying to, trying to struggle, why are, all we're talking about, I mean, these are interesting issues, but I mean, it really is sort of, if you want to know about our contact management and our prospect management, I mean, this is just a tool to be able to do that. If you want a presentation on that at some point, I suppose we can get one. I don't know how it's advancing the discussion.
That makes sense.
I mean, basically, this is Salesforce software, so you're dealing with people who are, you know, it manages contacts. You know, it's like a super sophisticated version of Outlook, you know, with a lot of data analytics grafted onto it.
What you're proposing makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Ruth?
I have one more question about retention. Are we talking about course, course, and completion? Course completion, programs of completion, semester completion? Are we talking about it at all levels, or?
Yes. Yes. And right now, when you look at the student success information that we talked about at the retreat-
Yeah.
-it, we really have been looking at from semester to semester.
Right.
That's been a big number we've been trying to move. But what we've not dug into is, maybe it's from one course to another course, where we might analyze that there's a problem that we need to be intervening on. And I think that, you know, that the number of cohort groups and the number of metrics that we probably need to come up with, will probably expand a lot, once we have more information about the students and the different groups of students. The data you've been looking at so far has been one semester to another.
Right. But we're beginning to look at course by course.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay. So we are-
I move to, during the meeting, and move into closed session?
Support.
Do you have anything else?
Well, I forgot to introduce Peter.
Peter.
Do you mind?
No.
No?
Bill, would you introduce-
Sure. The board had approved our contract with Campus Works, and I'm here, please to introduce Peter Lundberg, who's our new CIO from Camp, Campus Works. Peter started a couple of weeks ago. And next Monday, our Chief Information Security Officer will also be on site. And both Peter and our new CISO, Bill O'Tark is his name, will be here for two years, working with us on all those goals that we had outlined in the memo upon that-
These are the folks provided us to presume into the contract that we approved last month?
Yes. That we chose.
Exactly. Perfect. Welcome aboard.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good luck.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Well, it's been moved and supported by Bill. Okay. And so we need a roll call to go into closed-
I think you just need to say why we're going into closed session.
I'm ready to say that. We are going to, we are going to go into closed session-
In order.
...to discuss material of the Open Meetings Act.
No, legal opinion.
No, a written opinion.
I can't see. A written legal opinion exempt from disclosure pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act.
Couldn't see.
Chair Rickman Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Senator Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Gager?
Yep.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.